All right. So I'd like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty for justice in all. Okay, can we do a sound check?
I can hear you okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, okay, great. So just some brief comments before we start. We are here to interview candidates and appoint a school board member to replace the Newton seat that Dr. Pam Brown vacated. The appointment runs through to elections March 2021. Thank you all for your interest and thank you candidates for your willingness to participate in this selection process and to serve as a school board member. Due to social distancing requirements, there's limited seating in the library and masks are required. The public can also attend via YouTube. The link is http://www.youtube.com/c/srsdmeetingvideos. This link is also posted on the school website. The interviews have been scheduled 30 minutes apart with 25 minutes for each candidate and a five-minute break in between. If any candidate fails to show up at their scheduled time, they're disqualified after a brief wait. If the next candidates are available, we'll move up interviews to fill the time. There are currently five candidates, one has dropped out. The candidates following the person that dropped out have graciously agreed to move up to fill the respective time slots. At the conclusion of the interviews, the Newton School Board members go into non-public session to discuss, then back to public session to vote. I'm requesting Jamie Fitzpatrick Chair of this meeting. Jamie's in the room with the candidates. I can't see anybody in the audience, I can only see Jamie and who will ever be at the interview. So I'm requesting, I think he's in a better position to run it. Thank you Jamie, please go ahead.
Okay, just a quick comment on my own end. There's been times when openings came up on the board and there wasn't a lot of interest in the community. It's not easy to stand up and say, hey, consider me. Especially consider me for this thankless job in a time when it's going to be even less thankful than it is now. So thank you. It is encouraging to see people's willingness to put themselves forward. Clearly with one seat and multiple candidates, one person will be pleased and, well maybe all five will be pleased. But at least one person will be pleased and the others, we thank you anyways for. So why don't we start right off, Heather, you were the first one to put in, so you were the first candidate to be reviewed. Jim and I plan to alternate with questions. And you'll see me writing things down, that's because that's what I do. Helps me to remember what's happened, so if you see me writing things down, that's what I'm doing.
Hi Heather.
Hi Jim.
You want to start Jim?
Yes, thank you. So Heather, could you please tell us what attributes you think are essential for a successful school board member?
Okay, I did, we did have a statement prepared because I was told.
Oh sure, yeah, you start with your statement, thank you.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Okay, so hello, for those who know me, my name is Heather Ingham. It is my pleasure to be here today to interview for the open school board seat. I have lived in Newton for 15 years with my husband, who grew up here. Our children ages 20, 12, and 5 have attended or will attend Sanborn schools. Our oldest son now resides in North Carolina. Our second son will be entering 7th grade here at the Sanborn Regional Middle School and our little girl will be entering kindergarten at Bakersfield. My husband and I believe it is our duty to give back to our community through volunteership. As a Sanborn Youth Baseball Board Member, I am the sponsorship coordinator responsible for raising funds to ensure all youth can participate. I was also on the Memorial PTO Board acting as its secretary for six years. I've also donated my time to the middle school boosters. My husband volunteers with Sanborn Baseball and Sanborn Youth Basketball. Professionally, I am a program director at NFI Massachusetts. It's a nonprofit human services and mental health agency. I've been there for six years, starting as a clinical director and then being promoted to program director. I've been working in the field with families for 18 years. When I was a caseworker in the field, I provided support and therapies to families, helping them gain independence to maintain a strong family unit. And as a program director, it is my responsibility to oversee foundations for families, a community-based mental health program which serves children, youth, and families and adults. It is also my responsibility to provide sound fiscal oversight by assisting with creating and maintaining the program budget. However, the most rewarding part of my position is supporting my staff to create meaningful impactful change for our clients. I am interviewing here today as I have a belief, if you want to see change in the world, you must be involved and active. Change does not happen just by one individual. We must work collectively as a community to make impactful and lasting change. I have been participating in task forces and parent forums the past three years to increase my knowledge on our district and its educational and budgetary needs. Sorry to talk in the mask, sorry. We strive to provide an exceptional education to our children while being fiscally responsible. It is not always an easy balance. As a member of the recent task force, I saw firsthand the amount of teamwork and dedication that is required of our school board members. I have witnessed the positive change recently in the district and I feel I am uniquely qualified to help advance that effort. I am passionate, dedicated, a critical thinker, and able to work collaboratively with others. Being able to be respectful and collaborative are important as not all parties are going to agree, but we do need to work together towards a common goal. As stated at a recent school board meeting by a current member, we are one Sanborn. I truly believe we all have the same goals at the end of the day and we can work together to achieve them. As a school board member, I will do my best to represent the town of Newton and its constituents. We are in difficult times and need balance and partnership to ensure that we can meet both the educational and budgetary needs of our community. I believe my strong organizational skills, my keen eye for detail, and creative problem-solving skills will be an asset on the school board and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So what attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
I think the most important attribute is teamwork and being collaborative. There are six other voices on the board and we're not all going to agree, but we all need to work together and come to a common consensus. As a clinical social worker, my biggest job is mediation, helping families mediate, helping staff mediate, helping people come to find a middle ground. Because at the end of the day, we can agree on things even if we look at things from a different perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, presently we are looking to fill Dr. Brown's seat. Dr. Brown vacated because she moved. Dr. Brown has left a legacy behind, why do you think you are the right person to fill Dr. Brown's seat?
I think Dr. Brown and I actually had a lot in common. We both looked at a lot of things in the same way, we looked at things through a clinical lens, we looked at things through, how do you educate the youth while still being fiscally responsible, looking at the numbers and the data. When we make decisions as a program, I have to look at the numbers and the data. If I want to hire more staff, I need to have the budget to match that. I have grown my program in the last year from 14 staff to 23 staff and I'm hiring two more staff. So I know how to grow a program, how to grow things, how to make things happen.
Heather, in your, you sent us resumes and I was wondering if you could elaborate on this question. In your past professional experience, what criteria do you use?
Oh Jimmy.
Jimmy, you broke up again.
In goods and services, or the effectiveness of a course of action? And how will you use these criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
You need to start over, you broke up, we didn't catch the whole question.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. In your past professional experience, what criteria do you use to make decisions about hiring people, retaining goods and services, or the effectiveness of a course of action? How will you use these criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
I usually look at the big picture, I always look at the big picture, how it's going to impact the program. I also take the interest of my staff that work for me. Before I hire any new staff, I have one of the current staff members participate in an interview. So I know that the district has been doing a really great job with surveys and community involvement and getting task force and forums going, so I would always look at that information. I would also look at, how does it affect our bottom line? If it will be financially appropriate to take on a new contract or to take on a new staff member. I've currently taken on two new contracts this year that we were able to sustain and actually support the growth of our program. So I feel that I can look at all of the different data points and all of the different parties and how they can come together to make an effective decision.
Thank you.
What are your beliefs on the current status of public education and what if anything do you feel needs to change in public education?
I believe in public education, I went, all of my school was public education. I went through, you know, traditional high school, I went to Timberlane, but I went to a King State for my undergrad, I went to UNH for my master, so I believe in appropriate education and its worth. Not all families are able to afford to go to a private school. I do think that at times, our, our kids' ability to do the competency learning can be hard. I have a child with special needs, so the formative and the summatives are very overwhelming for him. And I think for me as a parent, doing more education on how our grading system works and how our competency-based system works, because as a parent, I can tell you I was very confused our first year in the middle school.
Thank you. Jim?
Yep. Heather, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
The board's role is to be the policymakers, you create the policies that the school must follow and to set the tone for the district. For example, you know, for your goals that you have set, which one thing that I definitely could support with as, as a clinician is helping make the goals more objectable and attainable. The goals on the board, they're very broad. There's no, there might be breakdown and you might have that somewhere else, but for the community, how would we get there? But I think implementing the strategy, implementing where we're going as a district, you know, creating the five-year plan, how to improve math and reading programs, which I extremely agree with. As I said, I think the reading, that is probably one deficiency that I think the school can improve on is reading skills for a lot of our youth. I know my son also struggles with reading, so that's something that I'm passionate about.
Thanks.
Can you describe what your position was on the reorganization at the time the decision was made? And is it the same or has it changed from then to now? If it has changed, why has it changed?
I think when it first started, I was concerned, I was, I was in love with Memorial School. My son had an amazing experience with Memorial School and I was worried about my daughter going to Bakersfield. I was worried about my hus, my son having one year at the middle school and then being flushed up to the high school. I can't say my, my belief changed when I saw the interventions being put in, the fiscal savings it was going to, as a taxpayer and as a community. I will be honest, when COVID first hit, I was concerned that we would be going with the reorg. But after, you know, talking to school board members and Mr. Ambrose, I do believe it's the right direction. We as a community were house poor. We had way too many buildings, we didn't have enough kids, we didn't have enough resources. We needed the reorganization to ensure that we're fiscally sound. Because as we know, things happen, you know, the roof in the middle school, you know, collapsed with a snowstorm and we had to search for that money. So I do think the reorg is the right direction for our district, especially as enrollments are going down. You know, in the beginning as a parent, I was concerned, but moving forward, I am on board with the reorg.
Thank you.
In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision-making?
I'm sorry Jim, could you repeat that?
Yes. In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision-making?
Knowing that the goal, the goal of making sure that we're providing our kids an adequate education, I think sometimes family, I get a lot of families that get really stuck about, well they're getting Bs and Cs, well Bs and Cs are passing, not all kids need to get As and Bs. We would like that for all kids, but when we're looking at creating education, education that would be fair and consistent across the board that people can attain, I also would look at what things would be available to students that do want to attain more, you know, maybe some, you know, AP classes and things like that. I would also look at how to ensure we can access technology in other ways to lessen costs. I think COVID has really given us a really great opportunity to look at how technology can be better served to meet more kids. I know we've had V-Lax before and we've had other avenues. I can tell you, I've on-boarded four staff through COVID and we've used our online academy and I've been able to train people remotely from their homes, not have to pay mileage to bring them in, not have to, you know, pay for food to feed them. I definitely think with the future, some sort of remote learning is going to be with us because of the cost savings that it can give.
Thank you.
If you're on the board, what are your priorities, what do you want to achieve?
I think my priorities are making sure that we're providing an exceptional education. I want Sanborn to be known for exceptional work, but also making sure that we're being fiscally responsible. I want to ensure that we can increase kids' reading. I know there's a lot of kids that have struggled with reading disabilities and dyslexia and weren't able to get help until they were much older or it might have been too late. I really want to, that's why I really like the reorg, because it's focusing on the younger kids and it's getting those reading scores up at a younger age. Because studies have shown, if they don't learn how to read at a certain, by third grade, like really read, it's going to be harder for them as they get older.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what are your thoughts about returning unspent budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
I think that's important, I think we would need to look to see there's not any gaps that we might be missing to ensure, like should we put some more money in the capital fund? But I definitely think we should be returning money to the taxpayers if we're not using it or if we aren't able to earmark it for something towards one of the objectives or goals that we're working towards as a district.
Okay, thank you.
What time, what is a time commitment that you expect that you'd have to put in as a board member?
I would assume a lot. I see, you know, the meetings, they're, they're twice a month, there's the subcommittees, there's probably other meetings that you have that we, we don't even know about as community members. I can tell you, I am very passionate about the things that I do and if I am someone that is picked, I will, I will prioritize the time. I always make things happen. I, you know, my boss jokes every time I complete a goal, she's like, alright, what's next? What's next on your, what are you going to complete next, what are you going to do next? I'm a very hard worker, I'm very dedicated. For those that know me, I come from a family of public servants, my mother was a selectman, my mother was on the budget committee. It's just something that, my father was a coach for 15 years. Community involvement is just something that is very important to me as a person, it's just part of my belief system.
True, you took out my next question.
Sorry.
Go ahead Jim.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to expand a little. In your view, what has the district done well over the last few years? And what has the district done poorly that you would change?
I think the district has done really well to come together. I think previously, the community, the school board, there was a lot of at odds and I think the, the school board is working really hard to listen to the community and work with the community. I think the schools have done really well at supporting families in need, you know, I think, you know, I think COVID's a great example, when we went into lockdown in March, I think a lot of families were scared, a lot of families were struggling and I think the district did a really good job of responding to that. As I said previously, I think the reading scores and the reading support is probably the one thing as a parent and from other parents that I've spoken to, you know, needs to be improved on.
Okay, thank you. Heather, what benefits, what's that Jamie?
It's my turn.
Okay, sorry.
What are your thoughts on school opening given the COVID situation?
So as, as you know, I did speak at the school board and I was on par, I believed in the hybrid model. I do believe that for some kids, kids do need to be back at school. I think for some kids and families, school might not be a safe place just due to their own medical conditions or their anxiety. But I was in support of the hybrid model because I felt it was the best compromise. And as I said earlier, I believe in compromise, I believe in meeting in the middle and working together. I can tell you, remote learning will be extremely hard for my family personally, just because the needs, you know, I have a daughter going into kindergarten and a child on IEP going into 7th grade. I did have a great meeting with the principal at the middle school, so I feel better. But I am a proponent of the hybrid model.
Jim, I believe you had another question.
Yeah. Heather, what benefit, you, you've talked a little bit about this, I'd like to talk about it some more. What benefits do you see if, in any, if any, in the academic intervention the district is investing in? And do you have any concerns about it?
I think the benefit is kids that, kids that will have reading disabilities or dyslexia or other issues that impact their learning will be identified much sooner. And they'll be able to get the proper, the proper interventions and the proper skills and they'll be able to do well. And that's where we'll have that exceptional Sanborn, because if our young learners are getting what they need, they'll become lifelong learners. I'm an avid reader, you mean, I've been reading since I was four. But my son is not an avid reader because he didn't get those skills and he didn't get identified until much later. You mean, the schools have done an amazing job, but I think if we can identify those things sooner, it's the same with any clinical work we do, if we can identify what's going on for a child, we can make a much more impactful change for them because we can hyper-focus our interventions based on what they need.
Okay, thank you.
As a school board member, would you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or representative of the school system? Or how would you, how would you view that role?
I would view myself as a representative of the community. And, you know, obviously as a parent, I would, those, you know, that would shape some of my views. But I, I truly believe that I would just be one, I'd be part of the voice for the community. I wouldn't be a rogue agent, so to speak, I wouldn't be there with my own agenda. It really would be, how can I service to improve the community?
Jim?
Yeah, Heather, can you talk about, a little bit about the time commitment that it takes to be on the school board? You've watched the school board, you've been involved in a lot of different school activities. Can you talk about how you're going to meet that commitment?
I think you asked me that, but I can, I can repeat. So I have a very flexible, I have a flexible schedule in the sense that I am the program director, so I am able to kind of make my own hours. My director is also a school board member, community member, so she knows the expectations. I can, you know, flex my schedule very easily. I'm not worried about my ability to meet the, the time. I have a very supportive family, I have a very supportive community members, friends. I definitely, as I said, if I dedicate myself to somewhat, something, I, I make it work and I go, I give it 100%.
Okay, thank you.
So Jim, we're at 3:24. What I'll do is I'll, I'll ask any, any last comments or quick questions that you might have for us? Or just comments that you'd like to wrap up your elevator speech or what?
I think one of my questions is, would I be assigned to the committees that Pam was previously on or would things get kind of reshifted?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're going to look at the abilities, try to match abilities to the, the needs of the community and there may be some reshifting in the committees. Some, some, depending on the person, some, you know, might go into, fill Pam's slot. Some might be moved around a little bit, it just depends on, on the total assessment, what, what the district needs and how, how we think you can best serve the particular committees with the abilities and assets that you bring to it.
I guess my last point is, as I've said, I've been extremely involved in the committee's task force. I, I meet with Tom for the coffee hours, I'm very invested in our, our district and our community. The school is the hub of our community. You know, we all come together to the school for whether it's sports or education or, you know, academic achievement. This is where our community starts. And I truly believe that Sanborn is an excellent school. Or, you mean, I could have went back to my district, but I chose to stay in Sanborn because I believe in it. And this is something that I am truly passionate about. So, and I'd like to thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We got a five-minute break. Okay Dan, any opening statement?
Sure, so I did just recently run against Mr. Baker and it was a, a good race, I thought. You were both very honest and it was clean. I want to be invested in this district like I was my last district in Plastow. I'm a local business owner, I've lived in Plastow all my life. I was on the school board in Plastow. I served on numerous committees and took numerous classes for serving on the school board. I was the chair of facilities, liaison to finance, which is the, on the butt, you sit in on the budget committee, you guys know that. I was very involved in Plastow and now I'm trying to do the same thing here in Newton, which is my wife's home, she grew up here in Newton. She's an alumni of Sanborn and I'm just, it's, it's really, that's what I'm looking forward to do, I want to serve again. Because I believe it's everybody's job to serve in the local government.
Okay. Jim, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, was that, I didn't miss the question, so was that about the right person?
It was just an opening statement.
Oh, the, oh, your opening statement, okay, sorry, thank you. Yeah, so Dan, what attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
You have to work well with other people. You're in a room and half of you are going to disagree, but you have to make concessions and you, you have to figure it out in that room, so you guys can come to a decision and be unified in that decision. Being broken up, it doesn't work, you have to be able to work with other people. That's literally the most important thing of being a school board member. It doesn't matter about your background or any of that stuff, it's being able to work together.
Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned before, that we're filling Dr. Brown's seat, why are you the right person to fill Dr. Brown's seat on the board?
So I feel like, first of all, she's a teacher, I am not, I cannot take her place, it's not going to happen. I tried teaching, it doesn't work for me, so that's one thing. But I feel as though I can represent my constituents in Newton as Dr. Brown did the best I can, you know, she was, I believe, she was physically responsible and I'd like to continue that. But again, she was a teacher, I can't, that's, that's his, that's an experience that I can't bring.
Okay. Jim?
Dan, you said you were a business owner. In your, in your past experience, what criteria do you use to make decisions about hiring people, retaining goods and services, or the effectiveness of a course of action? And how will you use these criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
Well, it's pretty, being in business, I, I know I look young, but I've been doing it for a while. You can tell a salesman, somebody that's selling you stuff, and they did attempt that and with the Timberlane board a couple times, you can tell that these people were just trying to sell their product, whether it worked or not, you could pick up on that. And that's something that, being in business, you can, you can see that on the face, because you do it often enough. As far as hiring and firing people, you've got to be a good judge of character, you know? But you're still going to make mistakes, everybody makes mistakes. But you're still gonna make mistakes, everybody makes mistakes.
Okay, thank you.
What are your beliefs on the current status of public education? And what, if anything, do you feel needs to change in public education?
So currently, I, to be honest, the status is gonna change. It's changing right now, we're living through history. School is not gonna be the same. So I was fine with it before. What it's going to be, I'm not sure. I'd like to be a part of it, but I'm not sure, it's, it's gonna be in flux. I believe they don't expect kids to return five days a week this year if we continue to follow CDC guidelines, which is gonna change the face of schools across the country.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, what do you see as the school board's roles and responsibilities?
The school board's response, the first responsibility is to set policy. Aside from that, you're also the, the jury in, in a hearing, you know, with disputes and whatnot between students and teachers and, and that. And also setting, as Heather said, setting the tone for the district. You guys, you, you all know how Timberlane was with a volatile board and it does not bode well. And that was the reason that drove me to get on the board was because it was so volatile. I wanted to be involved to try to calm that down. And, and it's just, that's, it's setting the tone. So if you set a tone of unity, that's what you're gonna get.
Okay, thank you.
Can you describe what your position was on the reorganization at the time the decision was made? And is it the same or has it changed from then to now? And if it has changed, why has it changed?
Okay, so for the reorg, I just come into this, and I did not mention this, but I have kids in every school. I have six children, there's kids in every school. The reorg really rose through, because it's not right now, but through the younger children in the flux. I had a sixth grader, so from the sixth grade, he was going to the high school after the reorg. And I had a first grader who's now going to a different school because of the reorg. So it kind of threw my life in a flux and I'll admit, I wasn't happy with it at all. I understand the view behind it, but at the time I was not happy because of the effect that it was gonna have on my kids. Just that's, it, it, it's being done well, it's doing, it's being done the right way, but the effect that it was gonna have on my kids who had just moved to this district and just started to make friends and then to have it all kind of thrown up in their faces again, it, it was, it was a tough thing for us to, to swallow. But we didn't, and we were going to. And you guys with the meet and greets, the collaborative things where they had, you know, the two schools, the two grades that were coming together, meet up and do certain things before all this hit was awesome. And helping us prepare for, prepare the younger ones for what was going to happen. Now I am for it, I can see the, the cost savings that will come to fruition. And I'm just, like I said, I'm looking to move forward, let's go, let's do it, you know?
Okay, Jim?
In the making of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision-making?
So I, I don't like to spend money where it's wasted at all. So part of that is, you, you know, whether it be class size and, and, and stuff that only like two kids are taking or three kids are taking, you know, stuff like that needs to be really analyzed. And you have to prove to me why it's worth it for me to agree with. But I also am very kid-first. So it's a balance, but I understand that balance. And I understand that everybody's got taxes on their mind and parents have their children on their mind. It, it's a tough balance to do, but I try to do it the best I can by being physically responsible with the kids' best interests in mind.
Thank you.
What would your priorities be if you were on the board?
My priorities would just be to work collaboratively with everybody. As Heather had said, the reading needs to come up. And I really, really, you know, just because, again, I know I hate bringing this up again, but when I was on the board on Timberlane, Sanborn was always behind with their test scores or whatever, whatever metric you wanted to use, it was always behind. I'd like to see Sanborn up. I'd like to see everything up. I'd like to see Sanborn rated as one of the top schools in the area. And then, and it hasn't been. It's going up, it's trending up, don't get me wrong. It's, you guys have been doing a great job, but let's keep that going, let's keep that, that trend.
Okay. Dan, what are your thoughts about returning unspent school budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
So I, if you guys have something, if there's something that's needed to be done and you can do it with that money, I would do it. With that being said, you have to maintain a certain amount of money and you're on a signed fund balance, in my opinion. And then if there's money left over, I'm absolutely for giving it back. But it's, it's almost like, and I'm not talking about spending, spending the whole thing, but if you have that and you have the ability to do it, to encumber it before the next year, do it and get it done, because you may not have another chance.
Thank you.
What is a time commitment that you expect to dedicate to being on a school board?
Uh, so forty hours a week is what it was before, but I was on multiple committees and pretty much on call. You guys only meet twice a month?
Uh, in the board meeting itself, yeah. And then there's the other meetings. Jim?
Yeah, there's a substantial commitment and there's preparation time for, for subcommittee meetings and also school. So in your view, what has the district done well over the last few years? And I, I, you talked a little bit about this, but I'd like to, you know, to kind of broaden it or be specific, more specific. And what has the district done poorly that you would change?
So, again, I was talking about it before, you guys are trending up, you know? And, and, and that's a good thing. You need to keep that path going. I don't know if it's doing more with, and I don't wanna say standardized testing, I wanna say, you know, we did stuff at Timberlane where every junior took the SATs and that's what was based off of. We paid, Timberlane paid for it, but everybody was taking the SATs. And more stuff like that will continue to drive the school up, because it'll know where your juniors are at. The reading, as Heather had said, is something that needs to be worked on. And it's happening with the interventionalists, because they're able to, to pick it up earlier. We already said I was gonna sound like a broken record when it came to this, but it's able to be picked up early, so the kids don't fall through the cracks. And that's not what you want to happen. You can, I can see it between my three kids that are already here, a senior, a seventh grader, and a second grader. I can see kids that are falling through the cracks and I hate it. And it shouldn't happen, but it does happen.
Thank you.
What was your position on the recent school board decision on COVID-19? What did you think should happen there?
So I was with you. And, but I, much respect for deciding to change your vote to be unified in your decision, which is what I like to see. You understood, I understood your position completely. But I also, a ton of respect for you to decide this is the way you're going, because you guys need to do it together. Like I said, I don't think school's gonna be the same for a long time.
Jim?
Yeah, Dan, what benefits do you see, if any? And you touched on this a bit, in the academic intervention, the district is and the amounts of money that are being invested. And do you have any concerns about it?
Do I have concerns about spending money on it? I kinda, you cut out a little bit.
About the program.
Question, Jim?
What's that?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What benefits do you see if, Fanny, in academic intervention the district is inves-investing in? And do you have any concerns about, about it, about the program?
So the program's still pretty new, as far as I know. Again, I'm a newbie around here, but I'm still pretty sure it's still pretty new. But it is picking up the kids early that are gonna have issues. And I'd like to see us not expand on it, but maybe concentrate on it a little bit more to maybe less kids falling through the cracks. Though the, the, the interventionalists, when they're on with the kids, you can see them making big, you know, strides. But it's the kids that maybe they're not picking up to be able to work with them in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
How could you help the board become more effective?
So it's a short time that you're gonna have the board for before the election, because that seat would be up, I can hit the ground running. I know all, most of the RSAs, obviously. I feel like I can get along with anybody, I can work with anybody. I'm courteous, it's not, that's, that's how I feel I can help the board, you know? In my experience personally, that's what it is.
Dan, what, what do you think the, the three biggest decisions the school board's made over the cap, past couple of years? And, and what do you think of them, of the, of the way the decisions were made?
So we touched on the closing of a school, which I didn't agree with at the time. And the way the decision was made, I could disagree with it, but I understand it from being a board member, why it was done that way versus putting it to the voters. I understand why the board decided to do that. That was one, selling Sanborn Seminary. I wanted to maybe list it for a year, but that would not have mattered this year. So I guess, I might have disagreed with that at the time, now I agree with getting rid of that. And as far as the third one, I'm, I'm relatively new, those are the two biggest ones that I remember. I mean, if there's a third one that I'm just blanking on, my apologies, but those are the two biggest ones in the last year, or two.
Thank you.
On the board, would you see yourself primarily as a representative, representative of the community? Or as a representative of the school system?
So when you're on the board, you're both. You're the representative of the school system at all times, you can't take your hat off. You are a board member from here on out, once you have. But you also represent Newton, but at the same time, you represent Fremont and Kingston. You are a representative of your own community and the school at all times now, once you get elected. That's how I've always viewed it. There's no either or in my mind.
Yeah, Dan, you mentioned your, your flexibility with your time and, you know, that you, you can commit to the time that, that's needed. Do you see any, anything that could interfere with that? Do you have any, anything in your, you know, that you're, you know of or that you'd wanna let us know about?
No, nothing, nothing that would affect me not being able to fulfill a board member role. When I was on the board on Timberlane, I would get a call that, you know, I don't know if you guys have run into it, but they don't have enough signatures and I'd have to run down and sign, you know, the check registers or what have you right away. And I was able to do that, so it, it's not an issue with time.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, this is a comment that Heather made and I'll incorporate it in here. What are your thoughts regarding our grading system and competency learning?
So your grading system, going from a school that had A, B's, C's, and D's, and F's, obviously, to the one, two, three, fours, there is a learning curve for that. But I guess, once you equate it to GPA, it kind of makes sense, I'm still getting used to it. And competency base is definitely a different learning style than I'm used to. And it's two different styles, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I don't have an opinion on whether it's good or bad just yet, if you can understand that. Because it's still, well, what, a year and a quarter that my kids have been involved with it versus, you know, Heather had ample time, I didn't, you know, I haven't been here that long. It's just that, it's a different style of learning and Mr. Stack's done a great job with it, helping my daughter, who needs it. So I guess she strives, certain kids strive on it, certain kids don't, I think. But I'm not for or against the competency learning yet.
I don't have any more questions.
Let me ask you, do you have any questions for us?
No, I do not.
And how about a closing statement or elevator pitch?
My elevator pitch was in the beginning. No, I just, you know, after running against Jim and having just run, I feel that I am the best person to fill this position. And with my experience of being on a school board already, and this is, let's be honest, this, this run would be a very short period of time before the board member had to be re-elected. You wanna come on up?
Wait till it hits the hour and then you can make your opening statement. Just in case somebody's watching from home and they timed it to the hour.
I don't think I've done this with glasses and a mask on before.
That's why I took mine off, it's all fog.
Or if I sound silly, it's because I'm fogging, it's not because I'm messing up. First, my name is Kelly Cullavan. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Baker and Ms. Fitzpatrick and all the potential school board candidates. This is an unprecedented and almost impossible time, not only within the Sanborn community, but as well as in our country. My interest to sit on the board comes from an immediate desire and an immense desire to see our district thrive. I have two children that currently attend the Sanborn Regional School District. Lila will be entering her freshman year at Sanborn Regional High School. And Laurel will be entering second grade at Baki. Having two children vastly different in age and education levels contributes to my ability to assess the needs within our district. I can identify the strengths and weaknesses at multiple grade levels. My capability to gather factual information, impartial decision-making, and firsthand knowledge of how those decisions affect not only our students, but our community, will allow me to make effective and appropriate choices, choices for our district. My goal is to advocate fairly for all parties. I'm known throughout the community as someone who has their finger on the pulse of the happenings in our district. Since moving to Newton almost six years ago, I have continuously been an advocate for the educational needs of our children. I pride myself on that. What I'm also known for is having very strong opinions. However, what many people do not see is that those opinions come after an abundant amount of research. I'm always searching for the facts, not just the information that agrees with my personal narrative or thoughts. And with that, I try to make the most logical conclusions. My willingness to have a discussion with anyone who may have a differing viewpoint or opinion has at times brought me insight to a view I wasn't initially considering. And many times, those conversations have brought me to change my mind. I've been following, I've been following the board meetings for the past three years diligently, whether in person or online. I'm up to date on the current challenges our district is facing. With that knowledge, if appointed, I feel as though I can hit the ground running. We have tremendous teachers and support staff working with our children. As a board member, I hope to re-establish morale among the community and the school district. I understand that being a school member has its challenges. No decision, no matter what it involves, will ever make everyone happy. There will be a lot of criticism. There will be a lot of criticism, I've seen it firsthand. And the many agonizing decisions the board has had to make, as well as some of the backlash from those decisions. This is not and will not be an easy job. Yet, here I sit, wanting to be a part of it. My intention and goal, if appointed, is to bridge the unspoken gap. Our community is an uncharted territory of enormous proportion. My goal is to help parents and community members have a better understanding and appreciation for one another. And make the best overall decisions for our students and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Hi Kelly.
Hi Jim.
Um, so. Kelly, what attributes do you think are essential? For a successful school board member?
I think a successful school board member needs to be open minded. Um, needs to take in all the information that's being given to them. To make an educated decision. Um. They need to be able to work as a team. And be open to suggestions that. Might not be what they were originally. Planning. On or thinking about. I think open minded, open mindedness. Is a huge. Attribute.
Thank you.
So why why do you feel you're the right person to fill Dr. Brown's seat on the board and to represent positions on which Dr. Brown was elected?
Oh, well. Filling Dr. Brown's seat. Wouldn't be easy, um. I feel as though I have my finger on the pulse of the community and knowing what's going on in the district. I have a good rapport with. The community, the teachers, the students. Um, the administration. And I feel as though I'm very trusted. In all areas, so I feel as though taking over her seat. Might. It will be different. Because. I am open. I'm open to ideas, I'm open to. Suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Yeah. Just finishing my notes. Um. In your past professional experience, what criteria do you use use to make decisions about hiring people? Retaining goods and services or effectiveness of a course of action? And how will you use these criteria to make decisions as a school board member?
In my past experience, I have a very long history uh working in human resources as well as. Uh staffing. My most current role before being laid off, I worked five years full time from home. In syndicated market research, flexible schedule, pretty. Pretty. Straightforward work. And my human resources um experience. It's a lot of times where you have to. Handle things that you would rather not. Um, especially working in healthcare human resources. Um, as far as interviewing practices. Typically. I would. Ask questions to try and get the actual personality of the person. Not just the standard. Why did you like this job? Why didn't you like this job? I I would always try to get down to the nitty gritty of who the person really is. And then possibly have. A coworker or a hiring manager come in. And try to do the same thing and tell me what kind of what kind of personality they got from that person. If that makes sense. Was there a second part to that question, Jim?
Yeah, it was. Basically, how will you use the criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
Oh, the criteria as far as making decisions as a school board member would be. Taking all the information, listening to. To everything that's given, listening to the opinions of my fellow school board members. And having. Them explain to me what I may not be seeing. Um, there have been many times, even with the reconfiguration. That I thought I knew what I wanted. And. Yeah, gathering the information, I found out that actually wasn't what I wanted, so. I I I believe in teamwork, I believe in getting all of the information, everybody's thoughts, everybody's ideas, meshing them together and kind of. Figuring out a plan together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your beliefs on the current status of public education and what, if anything, do you need feel, what, if anything, do you feel needs to be changed in public education?
Oh, our poor public education system right now. Um. The public education system right now is, personally, I I. I appreciate public education, I went to public schools my whole life. I feel as though. Not our public. Education system, but the public education system as a whole, is that the question that you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, you can you can take it either direction.
Okay, okay, um. Because I'd rather just kind of focus on Sanborn because we could go off tangents if we're talking about the whole system. Um. I believe that our district is amazing. I thought I I've I've thought our district was amazing the moment I moved here. I was bragging to people from in North Andover where we moved from, oh my goodness, you should see the library they have. Um, I was gushing. I feel as though our students are doing very well, um. Prior to COVID. Um, I believe that our. Staff are absolutely dedicated to these kids, they know them, they know them personally, they know their. Their strengths, their weaknesses. Um. I think our our public education. You know, obviously math and reading could probably, you know, the skill sets do need to come up a bit. Um, but that's gonna help once we have the reconfiguration done and we have the enrichment money. Um. To be able to help those those students who are struggling. And I think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Kelly, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
I think the board's roles and responsibilities is. To set forth a vision and goal for the district. Um, and to make sure that those visions and goals are implemented. Um. You know, to adopt policies and change policies as they need be. To make sure that we are adopting and overseeing the annual budget. Making sure we're making fiscally responsible. Decisions within our district. Um. And implementing that.
Thank you.
Can you describe what your position was on the reorganization at the time the decision was made? And is it the same or has it changed from then to now? And if it has changed, why has it changed?
So the time the decision was made. I was for it. The time the decision was brought forth. Mu- many months prior. I think I stood in this room and told Tom Ambrose. I would not let him do it. Um. After much discussion and. Many meetings with him trying to explain to me. What this was, Kelly breathe, calm down, this is why we're doing this. Uh, once the decision was made, I was for it, I was so for it that when Article Eight was coming about. Voting wise. I had myself and my girlfriends in town sitting around a table going. This is what this means. If you vote yes. It means there's a possibility we may do this. The district may do this. And it will save us this amount of money. And it will go into enrichment to our kids. These are townies, these are people who lived in Newton their whole lives, love Memorial, loved. The middle school. They were like, that makes sense. So I was completely for the reorganization, I'm still for the reorganization. Even though we are in COVID times, um, it's gonna make it a little bit more difficult, quite clearly. But I was absolutely for the reorganization because I felt as though it was for the right reasons.
Thank you, Jim?
Yeah, Kelly, uh, when you were discussing the responsibilities of a school board member, you mentioned that. The budget. And so my question is, in the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would you guide your decision making?
Goals. And objectives would be. Necessary needs. First and foremost. You know, if we don't have technology. For our children to be able to learn on. That's a need. Um. But an objective would be. If we don't have our teachers, we don't have a school. So, um, I think it would it would probably start with. The absolute needs, what do we need, what can't we live without at this moment? Um, it might move on to. Okay, we have a little bit more, where where can we implement? Money into situations that might not need a whole lot right now, but it might save us from costing us too much next year.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
What would your priorities be if you were on the board?
Priorities, my priorities. Well, be what I, what any other board member's priorities would be, to make sure that I'm present, to make sure that I'm available whenever need be. Um. To be open. To opinions. To be open to facts that. I may or may not have understood prior, um. You know, working collaboratively as a team has got to be the most important thing. Any school board can do. I've watched a lot of different school boards over the years. Not agree very much and it can turn into. A nightmare. Not just for the board, but for the entire district. And we need to have a a copacetic board that is willing to hear other people's opinions as well as willing to hear the the whys behind. What they don't like. If you were telling me something, Jamie, and I didn't like it, I'd say, I don't like that, can you give me some more information? And then you could give me more information. And I may still not like it, but at least now I have all the information to make sure I don't like it. It's. It's it's gotta be copacetic, it has to be a give and take. And no matter what the board chooses chooses at the end of the day, it needs to be united.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, another budget related question. What are your thoughts about returning unspent school budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
I say, my thoughts is that if there isn't. Somewhere. Within our reserves that could possibly use a little bit more, absolutely, the money has to go back to the taxpayers. A portion of the money has to go back to the taxpayers, that's exceptionally important. But at the same time, I feel as though we need to make sure we have our reserves covered enough. That we're not going to put ourselves in the hole if something happens. Like Memorial's roof going in. Um, or just something unexpected. Not all of it, I think the majority portion should go back to the taxpayers. But we do need to take a small portion and make sure that we're, we've got a reserve fund for. Projects. You know, we've got three buildings now. That are, the youngest one is. Thirteen years old. You know, things start to fall apart, things start to come in disrepair. And there's only so many Band-Aids we can put on them before it's gonna cost us more money in the long run. But to answer the question, Jim, yes, I like getting that check in the mail when I get a little rebate on my taxes. It's absolutely, we need to send the money back, we we pay way too much in taxes, but we need to keep a little bit too.
Thank you.
What is a time commitment that you would expect to dedicate to being a school board member?
Much as needed. I have a very, very flexible schedule. My darling husband is home at about two o'clock every day from work. Um. I am currently laid off from my. Um, work at my. Position that I had for five years in syndicated market research. I was working full time from home, but it was a very flexible schedule. Um. There wasn't any set hours or or whatnot that I had to work and I'm hoping that. In the next coming months that I will be able to go back to that position. Um. But I've always been very dedicated to anything that has to do with the schools, whether it was being on the task force. Whether it was, you know, talking about the reconfiguration, coming to the school board meetings, I always make the time. Not a really busy person.
Okay. Uh, Jim?
Yeah, um. Uh, Kelly. In your view, what has the district done well over the last few years? And what has the district done poorly that you would change?
I think the district, the reconfiguration. To me. Um, is something that was done really well. I I think there could have been a little bit more transparency. Towards the community as far as. What certain aspects. Of Article Eight meant. I knew what it meant because I attended board meetings. Um. However. A lot of people didn't and, but I think that that overall, it does not matter at this point, what's done is done. I think that that it was a great thing to do. We were very much house heavy, we had way too many facilities. We had too much overhead as far as maintaining those facilities. Um. And this was a way to basically get our kids still being with one another. And have the financial. Availability to help the kids who. Don't necessarily need an IEP. But. They're kind of falling behind. I don't know many other districts that are putting an enrichment program in like that. To support our struggling learners. I mean. The intervention support, it also helps our average and above average students by supporting. The struggling students so that we are not taking away from the students that are doing well.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts on the school opening, given the COVID nineteen situation? What is your position on that?
I would have loved to see school reopen wide open. Free as a bird like the beginning of two thousand nineteen, but that wasn't gonna happen. Um, my thought was. If I had been on the board. Making that decision. I would have said. Remote until October. For a couple of reasons. for a couple of reasons. Number one, the amount of money it was going to cost, regardless if it came from a state or federal grant for COVID, for the schools, it didn't matter. The amount of money it was going to cost for us to have everything in place to open these doors with the almost guarantee that we would have to shut them four weeks later. The risk wasn't worth the reward. Parents are going back to work thinking they can, you know, oh, yep, back to work. Everything's great. Oh, no, we're shutting down the schools. I just thought it was more copacetic to sit, watch the numbers, see if we rise, see if anything gets, gets crazy, watch the other districts in the area open, see what happens with them, and reevaluate in October. I agreed. I do wish they could be back in school. We all wish they could be back in school.
Jim, do you have a quick question? Well, it's four twenty-four, so I'll give Kelly the same opportunity. Any quick question or any closing remarks on your end?
I don't have any questions. I think I, I get a lot of information that I don't have anything that I don't already have the answer for, but my closing statement would just be that if I'm chosen to be appointed to the school board, I'd be a fair, open-minded representative of both the community and the parents. And hopefully make some right decisions along with the other board members.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Mr. Patello? Call you JL?
Micah, my parents.
Micah?
Calling you by my middle name.
An opening statement?
Yes, I was gonna refer back to my letter. So I do first want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity and everyone the opportunity to be here. It's, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about when I initially wrote the letter, I didn't, I actually gotta be honest, I didn't write the letter. I knew about the opening and I was like, oh, that might be interesting. It wasn't until the actual televised board meeting about whether or not we were gonna reopen that I was really inspired and thought there was a good place for me here. It was, you know, seeing a board that was, that had differing opinions, a board that said, well, I would open, oh, I would close. The voting unanimously regardless of difference of opinion. The statement of solidarity that that made to the community, I thought was inspiring. And I think that what I can give to the board and to the community in this moment is the ability to continue to have the board be united and strengthened in, in the decision making. And in my letter, I talked about a few things, you know, three kids in the district. One actually on the way, but Aletha and Eli are currently at Memorial. Aletha would have been at Bakersley this year. And Benjamin is, is three, he's almost four, so he's on the way. So I have a lot of, you know, involvement in, in their, their school, their education and and what's best and those kinds of decisions that are made. And also the fact that I'm married to a teacher. She's in the Salem School District, Rachel. So she's been teaching for more than fifteen years there, so I have a lot of perspective on the needs and the desires of teachers, students, the kinds of decisions that are made that affect, you know, learning, preparing students for an increasingly global economy, all the things that the kinds of decisions that, that are made at at these kinds of, of levels. But for me, the thing that, the reason that I was inspired was, I said, you know, I have a background. There's two parts of my background that I wanted to address. The first is a background in philosophy. So I teach philosophy at Southern New Hampshire University. And I like to dispense with the idea of philosophy as, you know, a bunch of people, you know, thinking deep thoughts without the ability to make action or take action. I think the skills that I try and give to my students in the classroom about deliberation, about coming up with cogent arguments, about questioning and validating assumptions, about establishing clear communication, about getting all the information. These are the kinds of skills, even the Socratic method. About the previous candidate talked about the importance of being open to all opinions and all sides. And I think seeking out alternative opinions to strengthen or change your own is important. So the skills that I've that I teach my own students in philosophy class, I think would be something that I could bring to the board to help sort of navigate through an extremely difficult time in terms of where sometimes no good decision, or you know, no decision seems to be good. We open, there's drawbacks. We close, there's drawbacks. So having those kinds of skills and that kind of a voice on the board, I think would be important. And also my background in marketing. So I work also at Southern New Hampshire University as an associate creative director in the marketing department. And in that role, it's extremely important to weigh all kinds of input, right? You have people requesting, say it's a TV ad. People will say, I want this TV ad because I want these results. Somebody else says, well, I don't like that language. And somebody else says, well, I don't like that image. And there's a lot of navigating and a lot of weighing of different opinions that you have to do in order to come up with something that's both effective and makes people feel like they've been represented and heard and actually, you know, make them represented and heard. And I think that's an important part in our of this role for our community is not just making people feel like they've been listened to, but actually listening to them, actually taking their opinions into consideration. So there's something to that, that active listening, active participation, getting all the information that I think I could, you know, contribute to the board in a positive way during this, this interim period. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, thank you. So, Micah, what attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
So I would say listening, being a good active listener and, and charity. And I don't mean that in the sense of the way we normally think about it, but being a charitable intellectual, being a charitable person where you, you really give a side of a discussion that's not your own, the weight that it deserves. Looking at other people's opinions charitably and humility, I think, is, and that's part of something that I tried to highlight in my letter that this situation with COVID nineteen highlights the fact that we do not have the answers. It is not clear what we should do all the time. So being able to approach complex situations with a level of humility and openness to changing opinions or collaboration is super important. But, you know, apart from that, there's the standard diligence and conscientiousness and an interest and a vested interest in the success of our students, number one, and the thriving of the community.
Thank you.
So same question. Why are you the right person to fill Dr. Brown's seat on the board and to represent the positions on which Dr. Brown was elected?
So I think part of it is that during this time especially, I don't think we want somebody who's going to rock the boat per se. I think it's important that somebody can look at Dr. Brown's seat, at Dr. Brown's position and be a, a uniter of different opinions and be someone who, while I certainly have my own opinions and I, I don't shy away from, from giving them. It's a situation where the important thing, I think now, is to come in and not necessarily rock the boat, but strengthen the motion, the things that are in motion that the board already has going and contribute sort of valuable, you know, points along the way. And that's something that I feel uniquely qualified to do.
Okay, thank you.
Micah, you talked about your past experience with teaching with active listening and working with diverse opinions and kind of helping to to bring a consensus. Along with that, what, what criteria do you use to make decisions, any of these that are relevant, about hiring people, retaining goods and services, or effectiveness of a course of action? And how will you use these criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
Okay, so the first is, I would say, you know, getting objective information, right? Gathering information is important. We can't, I think it's important too, to learn from the past, but not be defined by past decisions. So, you know, we can, we can make sure that we don't, we don't want to do something just because we've always done it, but there's value. You know, why have we always done it? Maybe there's value in that. So I think taking a good look, that precedent is important, but also taking a critical approach to it. In terms, you know, I've hired a lot of people and, and made a lot of sort of you know, these budget decisions and, you know, buying products for the companies that I, I work for. And I would say a lot of that is being able to establish a good relationship with the people that I'm working with. And I always like to ask off, sort of off kilter questions. You know, like in an interview, I would, one of my favorite questions to ask candidates is, how would I know if you're angry? You know, that usually takes people by surprise a little bit, but I wanna sort of read the reaction. I think establishing something about a person, how they react when they hear something unexpected or need to shift or change gears can tell you a lot about the way that they'll work with you. And, you know, some of the, the answers range from, from, well, I'd be screaming, so you'd know, or somebody says you wouldn't know. And those are the kinds of things I take into account. Well, if I wouldn't know, I don't know if I wanna work with this person because they may not be a very good communicator. But on the other hand, I don't know if I wanna work with this person because they're gonna be screaming and causing problems, you know? So questions like that, I think, can really draw out you know, the relevant criteria that you wanna use for establishing good relationships with people, products, or, or any other decisions that, that you make.
Thank you.
What are your beliefs on the current status of the public education and what, if anything, do you feel needs to change in public education?
So in general, I think working at a university now that has sort of rewritten the book on online education, right, Southern New Hampshire University, I think that there is what I've noticed is that public education is doing a good job. It's funny, the, the answer to what's, what's going well and what's not going well are the same thing. It's preparing students for that global economy that's going to be changing. I think we're starting to do a really good job in terms of technology. I was, I was shocked by how well we pivoted to, to online at the end of last year, even at the elementary school. It was my, in my own experience, I don't know, you know, have experience with the high school or middle, but we're doing a really good job with technology. We're doing a really good job sort of preparing students to have the skills that they'll need. But I don't know, I think we could be doing a better job of doing research, you know, looking at, at global trends ten, twenty years out. What are the kinds of skills that are going to be needed? Thinking about the fact that, you know, is, is the education system going to collapse? How do I prepare my children with skills that they're going to need? What if they choose not to go to college? What if they choose to get a series of certificates? Or they choose to get a series of, of micro credentials? What's that gonna look like? And how can we give them a better foundation for an uncertain future now? I think that's one, one place where we can improve public education, sort of preparing for the unknown a little better in terms of what the education landscape will look like over the next twenty years.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah. What do you see the school board's roles and responsibilities?
So first and foremost, I think it's, it's to serve people. Right? We, a, a school board exists to serve students, the community, the residents, and ensure that their best interests are served. Regardless of whether or not they see that, right? Some, sometimes, like we've heard already today, not everybody will think that, that their interests are being served. And there may be some situations where, you know, you can only serve eighty percent of the people. You can only do so much, or a decision has to be made that some people don't like. But I do think that it's about, you know, there's, there's the, there's the more legalistic sense of, yeah, we need to establish policies and we need to, you know, make decisions about budget and about all these things. But I think if we're guided by the idea that everything we do impacts people's lives, then that's, that's the key.
Thank you.
Can you describe what your position was on the reorganization, reorganization at the time the decision was made? And is it the same or has it changed from then to now? And if it has changed, why has it changed?
So my initial reaction to it was I wasn't sure about it. I was, I was looking at it narrowly. At first, I was immediately thinking, oh, my, that means my daughter's gonna go, right? She's gonna be in third grade. Now she's, she's gonna go to Bakersley for one year. She's gonna have to go back and forth. And what's that experience gonna be like? And then, you know, I, as, as I do, I employed my own methodologies for thinking through things and sort of took a step back and thought, what is gonna be the best for her in the long run? What's gonna be the best for all the children and the community in the long run? And, you know, as usual, truth wins the day, facts win the day. So the more I delved into the ramifications of not reorganizing and the effects of the reorg and sort of took that more bird's eye view of the whole thing, I supported. But that didn't take, that was like three days. So I just had to really dig it.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah. In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision making?
So I would, I have to start with understanding what the needs are of the students and not, not the, not the proximate needs really, but the remote needs, right? So if it's, there's not enough, like, you know, we don't have enough computers in the classrooms. That's not a, a need. The need is we need students to be well-versed in these things, or we need students to be prepared for these eventualities. So then the need, the, the ultimate needs of the students should guide sort of the budget. And then you have to look at the needs of the community. And then you have to look at, I think so, there's a lot of balancing that goes on when developing the budget. And then I also like to establish, you know, whether or not the, what's the likelihood that we spend money on certain things, we put funds towards certain things, that they will, you know, that the goals will be achieved by that investment. So making sure that the goals that we have, that the budget is meant to, to address are measurable, are time boxed and can be achieved within, you know, with that money is, is important.
Thank you.
What would your priorities be on the board?
So the first is all right, is, you know, making sure that I help amplify voices and help facilitate conversation. So as, you know, coming in as, as the new guy, right? I wouldn't presume to necessarily try and foist my own perspective on the situation right away, whatever the situation may be. It's, my priority would first be to learn, have important, you know, conversations, facilitate conversations, make sure that I can interject where appropriate, trying to help people identify assumptions, give my own perspective where it's appropriate, and make sure that everyone who's involved in decisions are, you know, informed as well as they can be and have had all sides of the and have had all sides of the issues looked at objectively and thoroughly. And then, of course, the, the idea of that is that if that's the case, then the ultimate objective of my being on the board will be served, which is that students and residents and the community itself will, will have a greater benefit based on good decision making.
Thank you. Jim?
What are your thoughts about returning unspent school budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
I think it's, it's important to do that with, but with caution. I think we need to make sure that, you know, certain funds are, are allocated for, like we, previous candidate talked about, like emergencies or anything that might arise where you need a little bit of a cushion. But I do think that those are, it is important to do. But I also think it's interesting to ask, you know, how can we, how can we return them? For example, does it mean a check? Does it mean a deduction on your tax bill? Or are there ways to, to take that, those funds and, you know, reinvest them in things that the school still needs? I guess, you know, preparing for next year, having a more, you know, long-term vision of what a budget looks like, maybe it's a five-year budget or you have five-year goals. Say, oh, we have this left over. Do we need to, you know, do that? Or do we talk about rolling it over into, into another initiative? That might be a possibility too. But in general, I think it's a good idea to return what, what can be returned to the community in a prudent way.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts on the school opening given the COVID-19 situation?
This is one of those situations where there is, there are very, I feel like there are very few situations, especially like when I teach ethics at, at SNHU. There are few situations where there are, there's just no good course of action. That doesn't, no course of action that will leave no one in, in pain or suffering. This was a really tough one, right? I can't imagine, I'm working from home, so I'm, I feel safe enough about my kids not going back. But my wife is going back to school. And if I were going back to work, I would be like, what are we going to do with the kids? I can't imagine what that would be like to not know. But at the same time, I also can't imagine what it would be like to be putting my kids into a situation where they may harm, you know, they may be in harms way, or, you know, it's just, there was no good situation. So I think I, I supported the decision from the beginning. My default position would have been to err on the side of caution. And ultimately, it's because of the idea of, of remedy, right? There's a lot of ways that we can remedy families that are negatively impacted by not opening schools. We can look at that. There's, there's tons of things we can do. We can think outside the box and do that. But if somebody dies from COVID-19, there's little remedy for that. So I think the cautious decision is the right one in this, in this case because of what we can remedy and what we can't.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
You talked about the, the school mergers. What, what do you see, if any, benefit in the academic intervention the districts are investing in? And do you have any concerns about the programming effectiveness, how it'll be monitored, that sort of thing?
In a remote environment, Jim?
Yeah, actually, that's a good question, and maybe you could talk about both.
Yeah, so, so I, I teach online as well as on campus. And, you know, it's both, both formats present themselves with levels of difficulty, but also benefits. So I think that the, the investment is a good one. I think that it's important to, to address those needs and, and make sure that, that these interventions are happening. In, in the environment that we now find ourselves in, I think it may be, it's something that we'd have to reevaluate. I, to be honest, I don't know how, how well some of those interventions would, will work in a remote format, but that's something I would have to think about more. I don't, I don't actually know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at 4:53, 4:54. Any quick questions or closing comments?
No, I won't take up too much more time. I just, again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, Micah.
Yeah.
Thank you for moving up your time slot as well.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Charlie, also. Could we, could we get back to the interview, please? Thank you. Okay, Charlie, do you want to go ahead and, an opening statement?
Sure. Started, I'm going to give you a little bit of a background of myself. I started school in Rowley, Mass. And from Rowley, I moved to Merrimack. I went to school in Merrimack for five years. From Merrimack, I went to Ainsbury. From Ainsbury, I went to Havel. From Havel, I went to Georgetown. Georgetown, I went back to Havel. And then in the eighth grade, I turned around and I went, I got accepted into SS County Agricultural School. At the, I felt that I could not stay at Essex Aggie because of the simple reason, I didn't own a large parcel of land, so I wouldn't have been able to have a farm like I wanted to. So I left and I went back to Havel and I stayed in Havel. I got married when I was 20. I had a, a son. And when he was 18 months old, I decided it was time for me to buy a house. And I looked around at all the school systems and I chose the sample. And I wanted my kid not to do what I did, jump from school to school to school. I wanted him to go through the whole system to the school. I have put three kids into the school system. I have three grandchildren that have gone through the school system. I have one in it right now. I, I run my own business. When I've run my business for 50 years, I am a state representative and I'm running for reelection. And as a state representative, I am on environment and agriculture. And I've been chosen for, for five other committees to work on. I'm also a selectman in the town of Newton. This is my second time. I, I was on for 2012 to 2015. And at that time, I had to deal with problems in the community and I took care of them. I won't mention them because it wouldn't be right. And I didn't get reelected, but I just got reelected again. I'm a real estate broker in the state of New Hampshire, real estate broker in Mass. I'm a justice of the peace. I'm a noted Republican. And I'm a level one solid waste operator. When I get into something, I get into it and I research. Pretty much about it.
Okay. And Jim?
Yeah. Hi, Charlie. So Charlie, what attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
Knowledge, learning as much as you can possibly learn and listening.
Thank you.
Why are you the right person to fill Dr. Brown's seat on the board and to represent the positions in which Dr. Brown was elected?
Well, being a member of the State House, I can bring back information in reference to anything that has to do with the schools, which I do now for the town of Newton. If anything, if, if anything's going to happen with the town clerk, tax collector, I let her know as well as our town manager, anything that happens to go on and any kind of hazardous waste or anything else like that, I'm very informed if I get back to them.
Thank you. Jim?
Charlie, you talked about experiencing a lot of different school districts. You have your own business. You've been a volunteer and for, in different capacities in the town of Newton. In your past professional experience, what criteria do you use to make decisions about hiring people, retaining goods and services, or the effectiveness, choosing an effectiveness for a course of action? And how will you use these criteria when making decisions as a school board member?
First of all, I don't react, I act. And I'll turn around and I will investigate whatever needs to be investigated before I'll make a decision, which I do now.
Thank you.
What are your beliefs on the current status of public education? And what, if anything, do you feel needs to change in public education?
Well, I'm not, I'm not for going backwards, I'm going forward. I'd like to see the school system stay in the 21st century. I do the same thing in the town of Newton. I speak with the fire chief, I speak with the police chief and the road agent. And I, I believe that we should stay in the 21st century and move forward.
Can you give me a little more as to what you mean by staying in the 21st century?
Well, keeping up with things, meaning, for instance, when you have a structure, you, you, just because you have a brand new building, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't have a maintenance. You, you, you have to put money aside to make sure that your structure stays in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Charlie, what do you see the, the school board's roles and responsibilities?
Well, the school board's role, in my opinion, first thing is the kids. Everything should be in the kids. And the second should be maintaining a feasible budget. And I do understand that sometimes it has to go up.
I'm sorry, you understand what?
Sometimes the budget has to go up. You know, you just can't keep a flat line budget for years, it just don't work. You've got, you, things go up.
Thank you.
Can you describe what your position was on the reorganization at the time the decision was made? And is it the same or has it changed from then to now? And if it has changed, why has it changed?
It hasn't changed. I don't have a problem with it whatsoever. I think it was a good idea. I believe there's money being saved.
Okay, thank you.
In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision making?
Well, it's pretty hard one to say when you haven't seen it. It's just like the state budget. When you, when you look at the state budget, improve the state budget and the county budget, you need to really kind of look at it before you make a decision. Matter of fact, I'm doing that right now on the county budget.
Thank you.
What would your priorities be on the board?
To make things work, have things move smoothly. And if you could, a balanced budget.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts about returning unspent school budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
Well, if we, if, to give back as much as you possibly can, but you don't give it all back, you can't. You've got to have some money for emergency situations. We do the same thing in the town of Newton. But I like to see the taxpayers getting money back. I got to be honest. Makes them happy.
So you mentioned that you're on, you're in the state legislature, you're a selectman. What is the time commitment that you'd expect to be able to dedicate to the school board?
In the summertime, 24/6. In the wintertime, 24/7. I have, I do it, I do it with everything else I have right now. Everything comes in on my phone and I take care of it immediately. The only thing that is in the summertime, I go, likewise, on Sunday.
No concerns about the meetings and?
No, nope. No, I, I have, I have perfect attendance in the house. I have perfect attendance in the, in the county. And I have perfect attendance at the selectman. And when I was on the planning board, I was on the planning board for 30 years and I was on the ZBA for 15. And I had perfect attendance, except for once I did take my birthday off.
Thank you.
In your view, what has the district done well over the past few years? And what has it done poorly and, and what would you change?
What, what they've done good is this, right here. They've got this new high school. And I, I can't say poorly. I don't, I don't have anything for that.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts on the school opening given the COVID-19 situation?
Well, like anybody else, I, I would like to see it open. I am a little bit worried that if we stay the way we are, if we finish up this year going on the remote, I believe that you're going to have a lot of pressure from citizens to let people go or lay them off and maybe not come back at all. Because this is, this is transpiring throughout the country, which would eliminate your kids interacting. And kids need to end up. My, my grandson's begging to come back.
Okay, thank you.
What do you think about the academic intervention the district's investing in? And do you have any concerns about it?
Not at this particular moment. I haven't got into it as deep as some of the other people have. But I got to be honest with you, I turned around and I had a conversation last night with Tammy Cluck. And she gave me And she gave me a website that I can go on and show you everything you need to know about being a school board member. And I haven't gone on it yet. I intend to later on. Even if I'm not chosen.
Thank you.
How could you help the board become more effective once joining, if you were chosen?
Because of the experiences that I've had in life and as well as what I would learn in the state. And I feel as though that I could, might be able to, if I'm put on this position, I might be able to get on, uh, education. Which would be a great help. The school board would get firsthand information that's coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school system? As a, as a school board member?
Whatever hat I'm wearing, I support. And I feel as though that we're retired. I don't work in my garage anymore. I have plenty of time. Change hats.
Thank you.
I know my answers are shot.
So, uh, do you have an opinion on the competency-based learning and the grading question that came up earlier as to competency-based versus the ABC-based and how we're doing our grading and providing that information?
I'm going to be honest with you, that's something that I'm just starting to learn. I discussed it quite a bit with my grandson.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
You mentioned you've been in business for 50 years. You mentioned different volunteer positions. That's a lot of accumulated experience. Talk a little bit more about how you would apply that to a school board position?
Well, I, I've had, being on the planning board, I've done, uh, zoning ordinances. And being on the ZBA, I've had to make decisions in reference to whether you can do it or whether you can't do it. I'm very familiar with the law. I'm, at, at this point, they still come to me and they ask me questions about the zoning in town, because I, like I said, I've been there for 50 years and when I moved to Newton, there was no zoning whatsoever. And I got on the first master plan and worked on that master plan and then went from there to the ZBA. So I, I feel as though that the knowledge is there. Granted, I don't know the complete aspects of the school. Uh, but it, it will be a learning process and in the learning process, what I would like to do is run for the position in March. This would be an education.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, James. Do you?
Um, I just, I guess I have one that I didn't really get to ask other people. Dr. Brown was clearly a fiscal conservative. Uh, she was a teacher, she was highly concerned with results, with the outputs, and the results for students. And she looked at the picture of, you know, where, where can we spend money wisely, where's it needed? As opposed to supporting what I call bright shiny objects? Or wants that aren't necessarily critical, uh, when budgets are tight and there's a lot of areas that have to be satisfied. I'm just wondering if you would talk a little bit about, um, where you come down as far as your fiscal philosophy?
Well, what, the first term as selectman, the fire chief came in and the fire chief wanted, uh, he had a purchase order for $3,500 for a fire nozzle. And I was not familiar with this particular fire nozzle. So, to be honest with you, I had the chief come in and do a show and tell. He brought in a nozzle, showed me exactly what it would be used for and an incident that I, I was on a tow and, uh, hit a propane tank and he showed, he said, we could have used this nozzle there. Immediately I signed the purchase.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, that's it for me.
Charlie, any questions for us or any closing comments?
No, no questions. Thank you for at least considering me. I can help, that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Thank you, okay.
Thank you. I think that concludes the interviews. I'd like to, um, move that we go into non-public session to deliberate per RSA 91 dash A colon 3 paragraph 2.
Okay, we'll need to do that with a roll call vote, I second. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes, uh, so we will break for a, uh, a non-public session and then come back out of that and return to public session.
I move we come out of non-public session per RSA 91 dash A colon 3 paragraph 2.
Second. Roll call vote.
Aye, yes.
Okay.
And I move we seal the minutes of the non-public in perpetuity.
Second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jim, did you want to start off?
Sure. Difficult decision. I think everyone interviewed has qualities that could benefit the school district. People have, uh, executive experience. There, some have volunteer experience. They, uh, many did not support the direction we're going in, but, but do now. Um, people are concerned about accountability of programs. Uh, about being careful with taxpayer dollars. Uh, some people, uh, referred to collaboration and active listing. And I think that those are all things that, that we need to, uh, we need on the board. But, but for, for me, fulfilling this position comes down to what qualities are most needed right now. And I'm very aware of, uh, the school board member that we're replacing. And that she was a fiscal conservative and a teacher and she cared about the outcomes for kids. Uh, she supported intervention. But she also looked out for the taxpayers. So, I'm looking at, I'm listening to what everybody tells me and I'm aware also of people's statements during elections and after hearings uh, about school board matters. And being familiar with, with people's fiscal philosophies. I have to, I have to say, who's, who's gonna have, who's gonna take, have the chops to stand up and make the difficult decisions? Uh, that, that are gonna support the direction that, that we've been going in and that we critically need to continue with. And people have said they support that. And, and I, and that's great that we, that we've arrived at that place where people are recognizing um, the, the value of, of the consolidation and the, the closing of the middle school and the merger. But in my mind, the fiscal conservative part is very important. Taxpayers in our towns have been overpaying for years. And we, we also need to reduce our cost per student. We need to support the academic intervention we've been doing, we've been, they've figured out a way to do that without adding the burden on the taxpayers. But we need to keep going forward. People talked about going forward, not going backward. So, in my mind, the person that has the most chops to do that is someone who's been self-employed for years. Has, has the, the, the critical skills to analyze and collect information. Listen to a lot of different points of view and, and come up with something that may not be popular in some cases, but is the right thing to do and will stand behind it. And based on my, my knowledge of, of all the people that we've interviewed, including, uh, and very importantly, their statements here tonight. But also their, their record. I, I support Charlie Melvin. And the reason is, is that he's a longtime Newton resident. He's, he's got a public service heart. He's volunteered countless hours to Newton and now he's working in the State House. I think he's, he's gonna be extremely valuable, uh, to us on the school board. He, his experience is decades in the making. And he's got the chops to stand up and, and make the tough decisions. So that, that's who I'm supporting is Charlie Melvin.
I came out quite differently, um, to where I am. When each person was interviewing and I was taking my notes, I was trying to visualize, can I work with this person or can I not work with this person? Will they continue in the direction that we want to go as a board or will they not? It was encouraging to hear, I, I think in all cases, that most people could support the direction that the board's going in. Um, some people were not able to do that until the board got there. So some people were opposed to some of the board positions when those decisions had to be made. But at least everybody supports a direction that the board is going. I thought the, by and large, I thought the interviews, each of the candidates, uh, did a very good job. I will say, um, and maybe I shouldn't, but I will say anyway. I, I think that in one instance, uh, they were pretty abrupt and short answers that, uh, weren't overly helpful, thank you Charlie, that'd be, I'll say it politely. But I look at this and I say, we, we have a seat that Dr. Brown has won. And she's won, uh, well, for two uh, elections and there's an election coming up in the near term. And in the end, the people are gonna make their choices to who's the right person for this. I would encourage the people that interviewed to run. I think each one of you can bring different, um, skills to bear. Uh, and I think that each one of you can help the district in their own way. So where do I come down and why? So, um, I'm also gonna come down in favor of Charlie, but for a very different reason than Jim. We are in a very unique and unprecedented time. I don't know what is or isn't gonna happen with COVID. I do know that there's issues that are gonna be happening at the state level. The state level issues are gonna impact us. For this period in time, for this moment in time, Charlie brings to the table something that nobody else brings to the table. And namely, Charlie brings to the table his role as a representative. And so I am looking forward to Charlie hopefully being able to get onto the education committee and being able to help us influence the state government to work in favor of what we need to have done in San Diego. Uh, I don't think anybody else gives us that capability. Uh, and that to me is the single biggest thing that we face as a district in the near term. Before the people will make their decision. And if the people choose any one of the candidates, I will be more than happy to work with that candidate. But I thought that the candidates did themselves great justice time and, um, so that, that's why I'm making the decision that I'm making. Cause I, I think that Charlie is, is unique to the time and place and that he can provide something to the school board that others are not able to at this point. But that is, that is my, my vote. So, uh, Jim, I think officially we need to have a, a vote. Um, so I would move that we select Charlie Melvin as the school board candidate.
My second thought.
Okay. I vote aye.
And I vote aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, thank you to everyone who attended and, and watched and, um, appreciate everybody's interest and support.
Thank you all. Uh, the meeting is adjourned.